I can, I can start it so the attendees can come, come on in now.
Yeah, that sounds good. And we'll just, at seven, we can begin. Yep.
Katie, you're saying Kingston is the one who's doing the tech, technician?
Correct. Yes. Kingston.
Got it.
Thanks.
Katie, is there going to be a public board scrap on, like Kalosh for the project?
Kalosh just signed in. Do you want him as a panelist or attendee?
Uh, he might need to answer questions from the planning commission staff.
Yeah, panelist.
You want him as a panelist?
Yes, please.
Okay. I'm promoting him.
And then Sean, if you pull up your PowerPoint, let's go to Sean's PowerPoint. The instructions. It's nice to see you all.
Damage to being at home.
Were you sharing, were you going to share your screen, Sean?
Yeah, I'm just getting it set up. Do you see that?
Yes. I think we're ready. Is, uh...
Okay.
Whenever you're ready, Chair Newman.
All the, of the Capitol Planning Commission to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Christensen.
Here.
Ruth.
Here.
Welch.
Here.
Wilk.
Here.
And Chairperson Newman.
Here.
Okay, the next, uh, item is the pledge of allegiance. And there's a little picture of the flag, uh, I think on your computer. So, uh, they'll begin. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. Of the United States of America. And to the public.
And that last clause kind of has some special meaning this month. Uh, next is oral communication. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
We had two emails that came in today for the project on Fanmar. And hopefully you all got a chance to read those. So for item, um, 3A, 208 Fanmar Way, there's two emails that came in. They are posted on our website. And no additions or deletions to the agenda.
All right, let's back, back up and give a general introduction here. I gave everyone a chance to join us. In accordance with the current shelter in place order from Santa Cruz County Health Service and Executive Order N2920, Executive Department of the State of California, this planning commission meeting is not physically open to the public. Limited staff or in the, um, planning chambers, and the commissioners are participating remotely by a video call. Members of the planning commission can use their reaction choices in Zoom to indicate they would like to speak, similar to raising a hand. This meet cable cast live on Charter Communications Cable TV Channel 8 and is being recorded to be rebroadcast on the following Wednesday at 8:00 a.m. and on Saturday, following the first rebroadcast at 1:00 p.m. on Charter Channel 71 and Comcast Channel 25. Meetings can also be viewed live from the city's website and with the Zoom meeting link also available on our website. Our technician tonight is Kingston from Community TV. Public comment can be emailed or called into the planning commission. I believe you received some general instructions in that regard. Members of the public may submit public comment only once for each item by email or phone call. However, the applicant on public hearings will have an opportunity to respond to public comments. To call in comments, before the items wish to comment on, call the phone number and enter the meeting ID displayed. Press the hash key when prompted for participant ID. To raise your hand to make a comment, press star nine on your phone. Wait to hear that you are unmuted and then make your comment. You will have up to three minutes to speak. If you are watching the meet by Zoom, you can take, you can use the participant option to raise your hand and make a comment when unmuted by the moderator. To email comments, identify the applicant you wish to comment on in your email subject line. Email comments will be accepted starting now up until I announce that public comment for that particular item is closed. Each email comment will be read aloud for up to three minutes or displayed on a screen. Emails and calls received outside of the comment period outlined above will not be included in the record. This meeting, this is the first time we've, Katie, meeting, uh, using this particular technology. But it's a new challenge for the planning commission. These hearings are important to the people participating, both applicants and persons. We understand that. Uh, we didn't create the little Corona bugs, but, uh, our staff has done a great job in setting up this, uh, alternative procedure, and we will do our best to, uh, have everyone heard and make, uh, the best decisions we can. So with that in mind, we will look on to, uh, public comments. And this is an opportunity for any member of the public to comment on an item that is not on the agenda. And, uh, do we want to wait three minutes for those or do we, are we prepared to move ahead?
I, I think we're prepared to move ahead for general public.
Yeah, I think, in, in the general comment, in the future, if we continue to do this, we should tell people if they want, if they want to do public comments, an item's not on the agenda, they should send those in ahead of time.
Um, do we, do we have any hands up for?
There, there are no hands up right now. We did receive an email, but I don't, I believe it's about a, a actual agenda item.
I see that, yeah.
Thank you. So then next, uh, do we have any comments from any commissioners at this point? If not, uh, they can wait until we get back to the end of the agenda. We have another opportunity for commission comments. And any, any staff comments at this point?
No staff comments at this point. At the end of the evening during the director's report, I'll give an update on our efforts, um, for businesses.
Okay. So that takes us to public hearings, and we, we have four public hearings tonight. We're going to take them in the order that they are on the agenda. Um, again, members of the public, the applicant will have an opportunity after, when we turn the public, uh, hearing open to the public, the applicant will have an opportunity to comment, then members of the public can comment once, and then the applicant will have an opportunity to reply. And that, that's the end of public participation, and the commissioners will discuss and make a decision. So the first item is 208 Fanmar Way, and that is an application for a design permit for a second story addition bearing for the required parking space dimensions and required driveway landscape area for a single-family residence located with the RMLM residential low-medium density zoning district. Uh, staff report, please.
Thank you. Sam and I, this is Peter Wilk. I need to recuse myself from this item.
And that's due to geographical proximity.
Correct.
So I'll just move out of view, I guess.
Commissioner Wilk, if you can, uh, turn off your mic and be muted, and also turn off your video, please.
I, I'm really frightened to touch this.
We can do, oh, there you go. Very good.
Can, can everybody hear me?
Yes, yes.
Good evening, planning commissioners, Chair Newman. The application before you is proposing a second story addition with a variance request for the required parking space dimensions and driveway landscaping to an existing non-conforming single-family residence. The property is located at 208 Fanmar Way within the multifamily residential low-medium density zoning district. The existing single-story residence, as it appears today, surrounded by one and two-story single-family homes in the Upper Village neighborhood. The proposed site plan, the blue area represents the proposed second story coverage, and the red outline indicates the first story footprint. The remodel increases the floor area by 346 square feet for a maximum floor area ratio of approximately 58%. Modifications are 70% of the fair market value of the structure, which is under the 80% non-conforming structural alteration limit. So the modifications are permissible under that limitation. The existing and proposed east and south elevation seen here, uh, or the front and driveway side. The proposed remodel utilizes stucco siding on the first story and wood shingle siding on the second story. Remodel includes a gabled composition roof and a deck overlooking Fanmar Way. The existing and proposed west and north elevation. So the project is, is, uh, has an existing driveway that currently provides two uncovered parking spaces with substandard dimensions. The driveway does not include the required landscape strip adjacent to the property at 206 Fanmar Way. Additions of more than 10% must be compliant with the parking standards. With that, the applicant is requesting a variance to allow an addition of more than 10% without meeting the minimum parking dimensions and the required driveway landscape area. The Capitola Municipal Code, municipal code states that the planning commission may grant a variance permit when it makes the finding shown above. The subject property has a lot size of 1,804 square feet and a street frontage of 25 feet. It's allotted small by Capitola standards and, and even smaller or as equally small on Fanmar Way. On the same street size, the average street frontage is 33 feet wide. The strict application of parking standards would deprive the subject property privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity and under identical known classification. Staff review characteristics and lot dimensions of the adjacent 16 properties. 208 Fanmar Way is the smallest among those observed with one of the narrowest street widths. Only six of the 16 of properties observed appear to meet both the minimum parking space dimensions and the required two feet of landscaping. Grant of a variance would not constitute a grant of special privilege because less than half of the neighborhood meets the parking dimensions and landscaping area. With that, staff recommends the planning commission approve the project based on the conditions of approval in planning.
Thank you. Do any commissioners have any questions of staff? No.
No question.
See, I see any hands here. Seeing none. We will, uh, open the public hearing and see if we get any... Well, first, is the applicant present? Uh, and does the applicant wish to, uh, address the commission?
I have two hands raised. I'm not sure if one of them is the applicant. But I, I have two hands raised.
So, does it tell you who they are?
Yes. Guard.
The applicant's representative is Richard Amy.
I, I don't see Richard, but...
And the owner is Brooke Johnson.
I don't see either one of those names raising hands at this point.
Okay, so it sounds like the applicant is not present, and we'll just, uh, go to the two hands that, uh, are raised.
Okay, and this is, the name Guard is the name of the...
Go ahead. Mr. Guard or Ms. Guard? Are you with us?
They are currently muted.
Okay.
Oh, here they go.
Now, can you hear me? Is this Mr. Guard?
Richard Amy.
Oh, Richard?
Yeah. Hi, I'm, uh, Paul. I'm, uh, Paul. It's in my wife's email log here. It's garden cat. So, that's what I said. Um, I also sent you a text message saying that I agree, we agree with the paperwork, including the variance for the parking width. Um, I would point out that the owner had a previous designer, it's a designer project which would have covered the entire second floor. And as I looked at the plans, I think it would have involved about four or five variances. I have redesigned, so the only variant is the parking, and discussed it with staff, and I think it's justified. We also designed it so that we meet the front yard setback and the rear yard setback. I reviewed the letters written by the owner to the east, and we choose not to lower the rear height, not to lower the second floor line. As it involves, because it in fact needs all the current FAR type setback regulations with the addition, um, I have adjusted and actually presumed that we would accept and request an additional condition that there be a fence in the height restrictions on the east property line to alleviate his concerns the adjacent neighbor has of crossing their land when entering the driveway. I'll answer any other questions you may have.
Could you repeat that again about the east, uh, boundary, what we were going to do?
I request a condition be added that a fence will be installed on the east property line meeting the height restrictions to take care of one of the concerns of the neighbor that claims, uh, they have been crossing their property using part of the land to park it.
If, if you put a fence on the east property line, wouldn't that narrow the driveway another foot or so?
Inch? No, it won't be a foot. It's going to be the smallest wood fence I can put in on the property line.
No, but I mean, isn't your driveway over the property line? The applicant, the owner's driveway?
Well, the driveway is paved over the property line, but we don't claim to be using it. The dimensions shown on the site plan are to the property line, not to the neighbor's driveway.
Thank you. Okay, anything further, Mr. Amy?
Uh, this time.
Okay, we'll give you a chance to, uh, return later. So, uh, other public comment, please?
Okay, Liz.
Yes, we have Gordon Van Zoiden. Mr. Van Zoiden, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right. Uh, well, first of all, thank you for everyone's time. Uh, and I know we have about three minutes, so we'll move along. Uh, I have read in detail the work of the planning commission and listened to Richard's comments, uh, and I respect Brooke's right to build the home that she has the right to build within the Capitola Building Code guideline. Uh, I also think we have rights of living there for 28 years, um, that we enjoy as well. And one of those has been the enjoyment of the view that we have looking out towards the ocean waters. Uh, we have several times, uh, wanted to discuss with the applicant how we might be able to come up with a compromise and ask that, uh, anywhere from three to four feet of the overall project have been reduced so that we can continue to enjoy this view. But it's the feeling of the applicant, they've met all the building code requirements, and there's no need for them to do that. So I offered a letter of compromise that I submitted today. I had a conversation with Matt Orbeck this morning. After reviewing the planning commission's report and finding that the actual surveyed area of the applicant's lot is actually, is, the actual surveyed area is less than the driveway width that it currently stands. So there's actually eight inches of our property that extends into the driveway that they now have. And even though Richard said they don't use that, there are several times that their car is actually plus, right, being the driveway to the point that we actually have damage on the flagstone that is on our driveway. So our proposal is to help mitigate the issue that the current applicant has with the width of that driveway and honor the fact that we will release not only the eight inches that she is on our property when she parks her car, but potentially another four inches so that instead of a very limited access to her, her home, she would have a much more comfortable eight feet plus, and that would allow her to open and close her car doors more freely. Uh, in exchange for that proposal, we just asked that the slope of the top pitch of the roof, the matching the bottom pitch, which is a 42512, and asked that the top pitch go from 812 to 42512. And in doing that, we think that might reduce the overall height by two feet, and asked for the ceiling height to be brought down on the second floor to 10 feet, perhaps down to nine or eight, so that we would get another three or four feet of clearance, which is all we really need to, uh, to enjoy the view that we have. Uh, both of these modifications wouldn't have any impact on the overall square footage. And I think if she does both of those modifications, she still has an open air height feeling. So we think this compromise and this compromise proposal, which we tried to do in person with her, but we didn't have any success, we feel that it's a worthwhile compromise proposal. If not accepted, and I spoke about this with Matt Orbeck, then I guess we do have the right to put a fence up, which was just discussed, on our property line, which would then take advantage of the eight inches that's on her driveway uh, and would reduce the width of her driveway and make it more difficult for her to open and close doors. So we're not trying to do any tactics here that are forcing, but we are trying to come up with something of both of us to enjoy the properties that we, uh, would like to enjoy. And most of all, we'd like to restore the friendships that we enjoyed with the applicant for many years prior to this. And now it's been strained by these current events, but we really hope that we can, uh, find a middle path that both of us can win from and regain that friendship that we enjoyed.
Thank you, Mr. Van Zuiden. Uh, any commissioners have any questions?
No questions. For Ruth.
Any, uh, any other public comments before we give the applicant a, a chance to respond? Yes, we have one more phone in from area code 925. Hey?
Hello, my name's Eric. I'm a, I'm a neighbor of 208 Fanmar, and I just wanted to chime in that I am currently in construction under the guidance and guidelines of Capitola and their regulations. And I just want to support 208 that as long as they follow everything Capitola is asking for, that I fully support, uh, what she's trying to do. I would not entertain any reduction in her wishes as long as Capitola does not do so either.
Can you give us your last name for the record, please?
Miller.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Okay, uh, is, um, Mr. Amy, would you like to, uh, respond at all? Mr. Amy?
How do I unmute?
Can you unmute?
How do I unmute?
We can hear you.
You're unmuted now.
Okay, thank you. Um, one of the issues is that private views in coastal areas of California are not protected. Only views are public. I'm aware of that, having been a zoning administrator in Santa Cruz many years ago. And I've tried to design per the guidelines and regulations, and as they said, um, we recommend an agreement with the approval with the added fence that will take care of one of the neighbor in Convo, Convo, Convent, sorry.
Okay, thank you. With that said, I will close the public hearing.
Chair Newman, um, excuse me, we, we do have a written public comment for this one. Larry, can you?
Is that, is that for this one?
Um, yeah.
Or for the next one?
Yes, 208 Fanmar, Carrie Bresler.
We have one for 207 Oakland.
Oh, there's three public comments now in the mailbox?
Oh. Really?
And there was an, and Richard Amy has already spoken, so, um, just the Carrie Bresler. Thank you.
So, I'm there. I will share my screen so that we can hear the... We're not seeing that, uh... No, I, I'm working, I'm working on, sorry. Okay, all right. Okay. Sorry.
My father bought it and rebuilt it back in 1994. It was nice ore. I say yes. The plans will only improve the street and also give my sister Brooke Johnson more room for her children. Since...
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think that then does end the, uh, public hearing, and I'm going to bring it back to the commissioners. And why don't we just go, I'll, I'll call out the commissioners in order. Mr., Commissioner Wilk, your thoughts?
He's refused.
He's refused. Commissioner Christensen?
Um, I, well, the only question I have is, there, there are lots, the variance is covering, um, the seven foot four driveway. Is that correct?
Also the landscaping on the driveways, the absence of landscaping.
Yeah, okay, so, so, um, but there, with that variance, they would be allowed to occupy that driveway space as it's shown on the site plan at seven foot four without the landscape being there. Is that correct?
Uh, staff, do you want to respond to that?
Can you hear me?
Not sure I...
Your question that would the owner be able to utilize that space as it is right now if they were going forward with the... now if they were going forward with the project?
Um, I'm, I'm, my question is, is that as it's shown on the site plan with seven foot four, they're allowed to have, occupy that with their variance. Without that landscape, that's perfectly fine up to that property line, is that correct?
That's, that's what you would be approving, um, in addition to the modifications and second story?
Right, exactly, that's the question, that's, um, that's all.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Welch?
Um, no, I, I'm, uh, I'm okay with the project, I think that, um, given the condition of, uh, the community we live in and Fanmar being especially the tight restricted area, that I think, uh, the variances, to me, are warranted, and, uh, I'm okay with the project.
Commissioner Ruth?
Yes, I, I have a concern with the three different roof pitches on the structure. Uh, there's the original roof pitch, there's a different pitch over the stairwell dormer, and then there's a different roof pitch on the new second story addition, and I would like to see the applicant change the plan so all three roof pitches match the original roof pitch.
So that's a design issue?
That's right.
From your standpoint?
That's right.
Would that, uh, cause you to, uh, um, vote against the project?
It will.
Okay. All right, anyone, before I comment, anyone want to comment on that particular point? Commissioner Welch or Commissioner Christensen?
Well, I don't, I don't want to debate with a fellow commissioner, we all have our views, but, um, my perspective is, uh, an individual designs their homes the way they, uh, prefer to have it built and have that view, and I'm sure my reply doesn't make everybody happy, so, I, I, well, it may not, you know, sit with me necessarily, uh, I, I think the homeowner has the right to do that, so, for me, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
I, I think, um, I, I agree with TJ, but, um, I feel that if, if they've, um, drew an ARK in site review, um, they've, they've evaluated the design, it all meets the requirement, and I don't see why we would restrict the applicant being...
Okay. Thank you, okay. My comments on this are, I want to, for Mr. Van Zuiden's benefit, I want to, um, let him know that Mr. Amy is correct that, um, we have never, and I've been 14 or 15 years on the planning commission, we have never turned down or modified a project, uh, to protect a private view, uh, ocean view, that's just, uh, if we did that, it would be completely contradicting all our precedents and setting a new precedent, so, the idea of working out some kind of compromise with the applicant, um, you can continue to do that if it's approved, and that's up to you and the applicant, um, it's not really that, for the planning commission to intervene in that kind of a negotiation, it's our job to evaluate the, uh, application as presented to us. As far as the variances, this commission is very strict on approval of variances, and the, um, staff, I agree with the staff that this one meets the, uh, two requirements for variance, so I'm, uh, going to support the application. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I would make a motion, we go ahead and approve, uh, 208 Fanmar, um, as, um, stated by the staff.
So with the conditions as stated, now, um, Mr. Amy proposed a new condition of requiring a fence, uh, you, you haven't included that, I don't see any reason that we need to include that, if they want to build a fence, they can.
That's correct.
Are you wanting to include that in your motion?
I am not, I am not recommending, putting that in the motion, if the neighbors want to work out that between them, that's fine, and, you know, I, I didn't get into it when we had our discussion, but, you know, the neighbor, um, to the east has a, uh, deck on the roof, which is not something that we allow these days, and so he's got a great opportunity there, and I just hope the two of them can, to work, uh, work this out, so I, I would not put that fence line in there, I'll let, uh, Mr. Amy and the applicant work that out.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call, vote. Uh, Commissioner Christensen?
Hi.
Commissioner Welch?
Hi.
Commissioner Ruth?
No.
And myself, yes, so that passes three to one, and we'll move on, thank you, to 207 Oakland Avenue, and staff report, please.
Chairperson, uh, I will accuse myself in proximity on this one.
Okay, and we need to get, uh, Commissioner Wilk back. Uh, Peter, are you with us?
Uh, I am with you, I've just been unmuted.
Thank you. This is a little awkward, but we're so far, so good.
And Commissioner...
Okay, uh, staff report, please, on 207 Oakland.
Chair Newman, before we head into this, I'm going...
The applicant is proposing to modify the existing property with four residential units to a single-family home with one secondary dwelling unit. The applicant is also requesting an exception to fence height limit. The property is located at 207 Oakland Avenue within the R1 zoning district. The application, I'm not sure if anyone sees that slide changing, but it's late. Do you all see the next slide? There we go. The application would convert a two-story duplex into a single-family residence, convert a 514 square foot single-family residence into a secondary dwelling unit, and convert a 601 square foot single-family residence into a detached living space. The proposal includes first and second story additions to the single-family residence for a net increase of 131 square feet and a total floor area ratio for all structures of 40 percent. The application includes the construction of two new accessory structures, a shed and a covered gateway. The existing structures at 207 Oakland Avenue, as they appear today, oops, that's the last page, um, each structure is non-conforming due to the encroachment into the required setback. Construction cost breakdowns were provided for each of the three residential structures, demonstrating that the modifications will not exceed 80 percent of fair market value, so modifications are permissible. The property activity is also non-conforming due to the existence of four dwelling units in the R1 zone, which constitutes a multifamily activity that must be discontinued after the 50-year amortization period for September 27, 2029, unless an extension is granted by the Capitola City Council. The proposed conversion from four dwelling units to one single-family dwelling unit and a secondary dwelling unit would bring the lot activity into compliance with current zoning and negate the need for an amortization period. Parking is also considered non-conforming on this property, um, it does, it does provide four existing uncovered parking spaces, um, along Oakland Avenue. A covered parking space is not required here, even though the floor area, um, alone would require it, because the structural alterations do not exceed 10 percent of the existing gross floor area. The proposed elevation for the single-family residence, under the proposal, all three structures are matching, are matching Spanish style, featuring clay tile roofs, stucco siding, and a mix of rectangular and arched windows. A rear second story deck will be converted into enclosed space, uh, but the second story deck facing, facing Oakland Avenue is to remain. These are the elevations for the detached living space, formerly a single-family dwelling unit, and these are the proposed elevations for the secondary dwelling unit, also currently a single-family dwelling unit. The Capitola Municipal Code states that the planning commission may approve alternative locations, height, and materials for fences. The proposed location allows a maximum fence height of eight feet, provided that the top two feet of the fence be made of lattice or other open material. The applicant is requesting a fence height exception to allow a solid eight-foot tall stucco wall facing Oakland Avenue. The yellow line on the aerial photo indicates the approximate location of that fence, the, the side that is per, uh, parallel, excuse me, to Oakland Avenue is the only portion that is actually eight feet, on the side there, it is, it drops down to six feet, so that portion complies as it is. With that, staff recommends the planning commission approve the project based on conditions of approval and findings.
Okay, any questions from the planning commissioners?
I have a question. I have a question, Commissioner Wilk has a question, please. So I had, uh, a short conversation with, uh, staff member Matt on this, and, uh, we talked about the color board and the material board that was presented, uh, as part of this application, and he said that in general, uh, we, we tell applicants that that is not required, and yet it is, uh, mentioned, I think he said item E on the master application. So, my question is, and is if we wanted to more formally not require that, is that something we would need to bring up as a separate action item or a separate, uh, agenda item at some future time, or can we discuss that here, or, or just have Katie change it? What, what's the proper procedure for that?
I, I think the...
You're asking the staff what our general procedure is or should be regarding, uh, materials and color boards?
Yes, and what's the proper procedure to change it, uh, if we wished to.
Katie, do you want to respond to that?
I will respond to that. Um, we could put that on a future agenda as an item to be discussed, we could talk about what we do require for submittals and including the color board and materials, but I, I don't think it would be appropriate to get direction on that during, um, a, a public hearing on a specific application.
I have a comment.
Please.
Yeah. Last I had agenda, the commission member said we shouldn't get into design, and now we have a commissioner asking for a color board and material board, and isn't that getting into design?
I'm asking just the opposite, I'm saying that we should remove that requirement.
Oh, I misunderstood.
Okay, any other questions? I do, I have a question, and...
So, wait, can I finish up with that question? Because I didn't think I got a clear answer as to whether or not that is actually going to be on a future agenda item, and if not, I would like to request it, and I would like to know the, how do I request that formally?
I'm happy to place that on the next agenda in July.
You have done so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That is all. Okay. So, I'm gonna, I have a question or two, and I think there'll be more later, you'll see where I'm going with this, but, um, do we have any information regarding the tenants in the four units currently on the property? How much rent do they pay and how long have they been there? I'm asking the, uh, the staff, if they know.
Uh, I don't have that information.
Okay, um, all right, I will come back to this later, I just wanted to see, maybe the applicant can enlighten us on it if they care to. So, if there are no other questions of staff, I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if the applicant or applicant's representative wishes to say anything.
I, I have one hand raised from a Valerie, I don't know if that's the, uh, the owner or representative?
That's the applicant representative.
It is, okay.
Okay. And who is this, who's, uh...
This is Valerie Hart, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, I'm here representing Derek Van Alstine, um, I've been working on this project, and I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, do you know, uh, how long each of the existing tenants have been in place?
That I don't know, um, I know that there are currently only one unit is being occupied, or I'm not even sure if they're still being occupied, the owner would know that, we can get you that information.
So they're all vacant, is what you're saying?
I'm not sure, I can get that information from you, I'm not sure if, um, if the owner is, I'm pretty sure he's following the, uh, council meeting, so maybe he will call in or, um, I'm not sure if he can hear what's happening or how he could address it, but he, he would have that information, I don't have it.
There is a hand raised, and the last name is Nielsen, and I believe that is the applicant.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, any questions of, uh, Ms. Hart? If not, we'll take the next, uh, the applicant, Mr. Nielsen.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, uh, yes, this is Jason Nielsen, the applicant, uh, there's only one tenant that's left in the, uh, complex, and they have found another, uh, place that they're going to be moving to, so, I have, uh, three of the four units are empty.
And how did that happen?
Uh, one has not, didn't pay rent, uh, since January, uh, we, we purchased it last year, uh, he, he was, he just stopped paying rent in January, uh, the other was a short-term, uh, renter who went to Cabrillo, and she, they're actually still there, they're moving out, uh, tomorrow afternoon, they own a house up in, uh, in, uh, Lake Tahoe, um, so they, they signed a lease that ended at the end of, uh, this last month, and they requested it extended to the end of this week, uh, and then, yeah, there's, uh, one unit that's still occupied, um, and they, uh, are moving out in the next couple weeks.
What, what do the units rent for?
Uh, between $2,000 and $3,000 per month.
All four of them?
Yes, they did.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Any, any further comments, Mr. Nielsen?
I think he is muted.
Hearing none? Yeah, I...
There we go.
Do we have any other, uh, no? No other comments? Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
We have, we have some via email at this point.
Okay, how many?
Uh, four, I believe.
Okay, can we have those?
Yes, I will try and get them read, um, by sharing screen, sorry, I've, I've moved stuff out of the way. Share screen.
I do not approve of fence height. Based on previous fence height dichusian on St. John Church properties, it must be much lower. Please do not make an exception for this fence height. It looks like a fortress. Ann Greeninger, 212 Oakland Avenue, Capitola.
So I will go to the next one.
I am writing regarding the permit request for 207 Oakland Avenue. I am con... I am concerned about the aesthetic design of the house. It is a large Mediterranean-style house in a lovely diverse beach community. I feel the eight-foot wall surrounding the property does not complement the feel of the Depot Hill beach community. Although we do not have a homeowners association, which I feel is a benefit to the eclectic nature of our community, I do feel that a design should fit the community at large. I hope that you will take this into consideration as you review the plans. Thank you. Andrea Dorman, 310 Escalona Drive. I live next door to 207 Oakland Avenue. I have a few problems with the design as it currently stands. One, the style of the house looks to be Mediterranean, which does not fit in our neighborhood. We have beach-style houses with wood and stucco siding for the most part. I see that this design is stucco, but overall it looks Mediterranean, and that does not fit. Two, the wall in front is way too high like a prison wall, plus the higher door entry section. I remember the church on the corner of Oakland in Escalona had major fence height restrictions, so I do not see how this very tall wall makes any sense. Three, I am also concerned about if the wall is going to come down my side of the property between the two-story building and the one at the back of the property. Again, this would feel like a prison wall to me. Currently, there is inadequate wood fence that provides privacy. Four, the extended balcony at the back of the two-story unit is going to look directly into our spot. I have planted several trees to create privacy from the existing balcony, but the proposed extension goes out too far and will intrude on our privacy without the ability to plant more trees to protect this.
And we have no more public comments via dial-in either.
Okay, so does the applicant wish to respond at all to any of the comments we've received? And that can be either Mr. Nielsen or Ms. Hart?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I think the difference, I don't have a lot of familiarity with the church, but I know it's on the, I think it's on the corner. And the difference between the fence location that we're talking about on this property and the fence location that I'm assuming the church was dealing with had to do with it being outside of the setback. The fence that we're proposing is within the setback, the building setback. So it's not on the property line. It's for the back, there will be planting all around it. It's not just going to be this wall. So that's my first comment regarding the height of the wall. The second thing I want to note is the last email mentions the balcony at the rear and that it was going to, it's always impinged on their privacy, and now it's going to impinge on it more. But we're actually taking that balcony away and enclosing it, so it's not going to be overlooking the neighbor. There's not going to be, they won't be able to see into the neighbor's yard. There's no window there. So that's, that's what I'd like to say about that. I'm not certain about the fence comment about the neighbor. I don't, I don't know where he's talking about. I don't know what he's talking about, the wood fence that exists there. I'm not sure. So that's all.
Okay, thank you. We will then close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission and see if what our comments are or thoughts. We'll start with Commissioner Wilk.
Thank you, Chairman. I also had a concern about the eight-foot fence, knowing that we need good rationale in order to approve something over six feet or six feet with a two-foot lattice. And I was pleased to find out that the property line is down to six feet, so that the, as the applicant said, that there really, really isn't a property line fence or what you would consider a normal fence condition that we are worried about here. I mean, the eight-foot portion is 25 feet setback, so to me, that's basically part of a house. So to me, that, the location, the fact that it's front-facing and setback so far, to me, is enough rationale to grant that waiver. Beyond that, I appreciate the applicant spending their hard-earned investments in our city. That's all.
Commissioner Christensen?
I like the layout of this, of what they're doing to this property. I think that they're taking kind of a really somewhat sterile apartment environment and turning it into a really nice courtyard. I can appreciate the wall in front, seeing that you enter into the courtyard and you seem to have a really nice area where it's communal, a communal environment for all the occupants on the property. With, as far as the exception of the fence, I, with consideration to what Commissioner Wilk was saying, with it being setback 25 feet, I can see that as being a bit different than providing an exception if it was on the property line. But I don't know, I just, I'm a little hesitant to set that as the precedent, because I know that moving forward, people want to build eight-foot fences all the time, and a six-foot fence really seems to make much of a difference if they were to just provide a six-foot wall there instead of an eight-foot fence, or eight-foot wall, or six-foot fence with the lattice. That's my overall comment, but I don't, I don't necessarily have any questions, Julie.
Commissioner Ruth?
Yeah, well, I think it's obvious the property as it stands today is in a much-needed workover. It's been kind of in a rundown condition for a long time. But I have to agree with the last letter of public comment that was introduced. It doesn't fit into the neighborhood, and just to kind of editorialize, you know, we used to consider design, and that's one of the reasons Capitola has been able to maintain its character all these years. The Arkansasite Committee looked hard at designs back in those years. So did the council, so did the planning commission, and now we don't do that. We seem to have lost our way. The Arkansasite Commission has lost its way to really try and maintain the character of this community. And this is a tough one for me, because the property isn't such dire need of improvement, but it is so out of character with the neighborhood. And I really think we need to start focusing on design again, because that is the very thing that maintains the character of this community. And without that lever over design, we will lose the character of this community over a long period of time.
Thank you. Okay. I have a completely different position on this application, and I don't know exactly what to do about it, but bear with me, please. So this was in the coastal commission, coastal zone. The, I'm not so much concerned about, sorry? Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. So this is in the coastal zone, and the wall is not the most important thing to me, except it's symbolic of the concern I have of this fortress that's being created here out of four housing units. Because one of the most important policies in the coastal zone is the preservation of housing, and especially housing that can be affordable to some people that, I wouldn't call it low income, but I would say it's more affordable than a lot of housing in Capitola. So there's something called the Mellow Act that addresses specifically conversions in the coastal zone that caused the loss of affordable housing. And the city attorney has looked into that, and I agree with the city attorney saying that technically this project does not fit within the requirements of the Mellow Act, and that's named after, some of you know, Henry Mellow was a Santa Cruz County legislator who, that the theater in Watsonville is named after, but he's the one that presented that bill. Anyway, that, the Mellow Act doesn't technically apply, but it also says it establishes minimum requirements for housing within the coastal zone. Then there are other parts of our government code, and I'll just quote one portion here that says, "The availability of housing is of vital statewide importance, and the early attainment of decent housing and a suitable living environment for every Californian is a priority of the highest order." So we have all kinds of programs and rent allocations in our community to try to create housing units, and what we have here are four, in my opinion, very decent-looking housing units that are being converted into a compound for one family. So we're losing, we're losing four units, and the family's getting something that, from a design standpoint, some people object to, but I object to from the standpoint of possible loss of housing stock in the community. I don't know what to do about that. It's more of a city council issue, I suppose, but I really have a hard time. I mean, last week, we experienced throughout the country, a lot of dissatisfaction in the country. Part of it was over racial justice, but a lot of it was over economic disparities. And that's kind of what this symbolizes here, is an individual's coming in and basically four, four units are being lost for, for one family that has obviously a lot more economic wherewithal. And as a, I'm just concerned about that, and I think our city council should look into some changes in our ordinances to control this type of gentrification of the community. So I'd be interested to hear if that resonates with anyone else.
I can respond to that. This is Commissioner Wilk. I had that question as well in terms of the number of units being lost and why, you know, what the rationale is. And it was given the response that, well, they were going to have to do it anyway, because it's not to code currently, so that by 2029, they have to, they have to make a modification to the, to the living space anyway, unless, unless they anticipate that whoever's on the planning commission in 2029 gives them an extension on their variance. That would be the city council, not the planning commission. Okay, well, we don't know who's going to be there either. I guess my concern would be for the property owner who, perhaps if they knew ahead of time that this was an objection or that the city had an ordinance against this, but for us to turn this down because, because we anticipate that the city council should do something about affordable housing, I don't think that's our role. And so I, I think we should, we should allow them to follow the rules and not turn them down as long as they are following rules. With regards to the style, I don't know that there is a style in Capitola. I know that Casablanca is, is right on the corner of Depot Hill, and that's Spanish style. I think if you walk down El Salto and go down some of the sidewalks there, you'll see some Mediterranean houses. So it may not be consistent with the housing on that street, but I, I would be reluctant to say it doesn't fit in the community at large. So, so I, I in fact will make a motion to approve the project as presented by staff based on the conditions and findings presented by staff.
Let me just respond to that issue of the requirement that they conform over 50 years to the zoning. So in 1988, the ordinance allows an applicant or a property owner to get an extension. In 1988, that's 32 years ago, they applied for an extension, and that was denied at that time. But the 32 years is a long time, and things have changed a lot. And the policy, the housing policy in this state has changed a lot in 32 years, and so I think it trumps the amortization rules that existed back then, and I think the city council should and would grant an extension if they applied for it. And as far as purchasing the property without any awareness of, of the possibility that housing, the loss of housing stock is a concern, I think that it's been pretty, pretty available or well-known to anyone who wanted to know that there's a critical housing shortage in the coastal zone. Coastal Commission has a very strong policy of preserving affordable housing within the coastal zone. So I, I think that they should not have been taken by surprise. Anyway, anyone else?
Well, we do, we have a motion on the table.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second from Commissioner Christensen. Do we have any further discussion? And the motion includes the wall as designed, I gather, as proposed? Yes. Okay, so no further discussion. We'll have a roll call vote. Commissioner Wilk? Aye. Commissioner Christensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruth?
No.
And chairman votes no. So that, that application is denied. And of course, there's an opportunity to appeal to the city council, and we can talk later in the agenda about whether anything else could or should be done in this, with regard to my comments.
Chair Newman, would you, does anyone want to entertain a second motion before we? That motion died and would be considered a denial, but if there's any other motions, you have the opportunity.
Anyone else want to make a motion? Hearing none?
I have a motion to approve without the fence.
So the, the motion is to approve the application as presented without any, with all the conditions except no fence variance allowed? Is that the idea?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes. Does that make sense? Everyone?
I'll second that, Commissioner Wilk.
Okay, Commissioner Wilk seconds. Any further comments on that motion?
I have a question. So does that also include the six-foot wall along the side that's perfectly legal?
That, yes, that is the six-foot fence along the side.
So let me understand-
I mean, unless that, is that a made point of contention? Go ahead.
Point of clarification? This is Peter Wilk. My understanding of your motion was just to not approve the variance, therefore making the fence or wall come down to six feet and therefore be within regulations. Is that correct?
Yes, that's my, that was my intention.
Does that second still stand?
That second still stands, then.
Okay, any, Commissioner Ruth, did you have any further questions about the motion?
No.
Okay, roll call, Commissioner Wilk? Aye. Commissioner Christensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruth?
No.
And the chairman votes no. Any other motions? Hearing none. We'll probably hear more about this application at the city council level, but at this point, that's the end of this item, and we'll move on to the next- that's the end of this item, and we'll move on to the next public hearing, which is 203 Esplanade. Do we have a staff report, please?
I do. Sean, can you take yours up?
Yeah.
We're going to get TJ back here.
I'm here.
You're back? Okay, now for the staff report.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Newman. Tonight, the applicant at 203 Esplanade is requesting a conditional use permit and design permit for a takeout window at Zelda's Restaurant in the Central Village. Zelda's Restaurant is located on the Esplanade, adjacent to Tacos Moreno and Mai Tai Beach. Zelda's is unique in that the parcel wraps around the parcel of Tacos Moreno with a restaurant from the west side and a large outdoor dining deck located on the east side, directly adjacent to the Capitola Beach, as shown here. The applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit for a takeout window along the front facade of the building, adjacent to the front door, shown here in yellow. Proposal includes replacing the existing three-foot-eight-by-three-foot-eight picture window with a single-hung, double-paned Tuscany window of the exact same proportions. The window is located in front of the existing interior coffee bar. The owner plans to serve coffee beverages, some grab-and-go items, as well as some items off their main dish. A takeout window use in the Central Village requires a conditional use permit. The proposed takeout window complies with the considerations in the Capital Municipal Code and circulation mitigation measures and the trash impact fee have been included in the conditions of approval. The structure of 203 Esplanade is also historic, and any modification to a historic structure requires a conditional use permit as well. Staff has reviewed the proposed project and determined that the proposed takeout window complies with the Secretary of the Interior's standards. I would point out as well, and related to a commissioner comment on the phone earlier, that they were informed that there will be, that there will be these temporary use permits being issued for takeout windows in the village, and they still wish to proceed with this application because they would like to have this window there permanently. So that, the staff recommends that the planning commission review and approve the application number 20-0160, subject to the conditions and findings.
Anyone have any questions of the staff?
Just a comment. This is Commissioner Ruth. When we approved, was it 403 Capitola Avenue next to the firehouse, one of the conditions that I asked for was that they be required to provide a trash receptacle according to whatever the city's design requirements were for those. And so I'd like to see that also for this takeout window.
I have a question. This is Commissioner Ruth. The question is one of timing. So my understanding is that the parking spaces all along the Esplanade, including in front of the proposed takeout window, are temporarily blocked off from automobiles. And so therefore, at least during the COVID crisis, if this takeout window was in place and there was a line of people, there, because of the parking spaces being blocked off, there would continue to be plenty of space for pedestrian clearance around the takeout window. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I?
Any other questions? Go ahead.
I'd like to just add just some clarification that under condition of approval number two for the future trash impact fee due to the COVID-19 current pandemic, we, the condition was placed on this application that the annual trash impact fee would take place one year after the shelter in place has been lifted, just to provide some economic relief to one of our longstanding businesses in the village. So if the addition, additional condition were to be added regarding the trash receptacle, I would suggest you combine that with condition number two and allow one year prior to requiring that installment.
Commissioner Ruth, I would agree with that.
Okay. One more point of clarification. This is Commissioner Wilk again. I'm recalling when Tacos Moreno used to be a different business, and there was a request for a takeout window there, which was eventually approved, but there was a lot of comments and concerns that a takeout window would be blocking pedestrian traffic. And I was wondering how we got around that concern. Do you have any memory of that, Katie?
I, I do recall with that application, there was a lot of concern about the trash receptacles. In terms of queuing, I, I don't recall that being an issue next door with Tacos Moreno's. And I, with this application, they have said the queuing will be along the window frontage and could wrap where there's an entryway to the beach as well, if, if it backed up that far.
Okay, I may be misremembering. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? If not, we will open the public hearing. And is, does the applicant have a representative?
The applicant.
I believe the applicant has her hand raised and will allow the talk. Jill?
Okay. Thank you.
Hello?
Yes.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to address, we do have a very large trash receptacle already on the deck. It's like housed in like a little house-type thing. There's two really large garbages in there currently.
Can you give us your name for the record, please?
Jill Ely.
Thank you. Okay, anything else you'd like to address?
Um, not necessarily. I just wanted to mention that I had already applied before city council's temporary ones. And rather than get a temporary one and later decided it's something I want to keep, I just decided to keep going at this time. That said, I have no idea, you know, what's going to come of it. It was just something that, due to the COVID, that we thought would be helpful during this time with, you know, less tables.
Okay. Well, you might as well keep going.
Exactly.
Don't want to get this far. Okay.
Jill, can you?
Do you have any other public comments, Mr.?
Jill, could you clarify if that's the dumpsters that are enclosed, or do you have a, an accessible trash can for the public?
Well, we have, we probably have between the restaurant, like on the, between the restaurant and the deck, I think we keep anywhere from four to six garbage cans from ours and recycling receptacles in addition to the dumpsters.
Okay, thank you.
Now, this, this Commissioner Ruth, Ms. Ely, but those garbage cans aren't accessible by the public, are they?
Yes.
Are they, what, through the walk, through the walkway, the breezeway, or where are they? They're not in front of the, yeah.
There is a several, a couple of them right next to the hostess podium, and then there's generally some like, I don't know how to explain, like next to where we, there's like a wood, there's like a wood enclosure that we actually keep our coolers in for beer, and right next to there, we also have another, two receptacles.
Okay, but for.
For the.
My, yeah, my point would be for people taking out food on the sidewalk, because that's where the window's facing, and then walking down the sidewalk, they aren't really accessing those, those cans.
No, yes, we don't. They would have to be from like maybe the walkway or going from, you know, to the beach. If they were going through the restaurant to the beach, then yeah, there's, we keep lots of garbages right back there.
And looking at the public comment, public comment email, there is none at this time.
Someone has asked if we can put the picture up.
Picture of, sorry, is it a comment or a picture of the site?
The comment just says, the chat, can we put the picture up? Site wants a site.
I think that was Katie saying that you could do that.
Oh.
If we so desire.
I see.
Nick, Nick, can I, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, go ahead.
Or, I'm sorry, Commissioner Ruth, I apologize.
No problem.
But you're, you're requesting that the condition be added, that there's a public trash can provided by the city on that, that, on the public accessway on the Esplanade. Is that right?
Actually, provided by the restaurant somewhere where it's accessible to the public out towards the sidewalk.
Yeah, we would have.
Okay, so just like a movable trash can?
Yeah, according to whatever design.
Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, you know, we've heard that the city's been working on the design for trash cans now for two years. It's, you come up with it, with an answer, so, so whatever, whatever design the city comes up with, that they would provide a trash can that reflects that design.
Yeah. So Commissioner Christensen, I can clarify. I admit it was, Commissioner Ruth was referring to the To Go Pizzeria, where a condition was included for the applicant to provide funding for a trash receptacle to the city, and then the city would put a public trash receptacle of the design Commissioner Ruth was describing somewhere in the village, just to help with the additional trash created by the takeout.
Thanks for clarifying.
Okay.
And that's, and that's on top of, excuse me, that was on, this is directed to Matt, but I would, so that's on top of the, the requirement of the fees, the trash fees.
Yes, I believe there's a yearly DIA trash fee, and then there's a one-time receptacle fee.
Okay.
If I remember, it's something like $800 for a one-time fee to the public works.
Okay.
Okay, do we have any other, excuse me?
No, go ahead.
Okay, any other public comments?
It looks like the applicant has her hand up and maybe can provide some feedback on.
Okay.
Um, was that from?
Ms. Ely?
It wasn't, it was up from before, but I don't have any, anything else to say, and I have no problem with any of the requirements for garbage can, or receptacles, or any fees due.
Okay. Thank you. We'll close the public hearing and see if the commissioners have any comments. We'll start with Commissioner Welch.
I have no comments. I'm in favor of the project.
Commissioner Ruth?
No comments.
Commissioner Christensen?
I have no comments. I support, um, with you.
Commissioner Wilk?
No comment.
Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Commissioner Ruth, was that a motion to approve with your trash receptacle addition as part of condition number two?
Correct.
Okay. Clarification is, so my understanding was that the, there was going to be no trash requirements during the COVID-19 based on Katie mentioning that we wanted to give the restaurateurs a break. So are you suggesting that that recommendation not be implemented, but rather we have that trash fee implemented immediately or after the COVID?
This is Commissioner Ruth. Are you addressing me, Commissioner Wilk?
I am. I'm trying to understand the motion.
No, I, I would leave that up to staff. If, if they want to defer the collection of the fee, that's, I don't have a problem with that.
Thank you. Okay, there was some confusion on the second here. I'm not sure for the purposes of our secretary, I think it was Commissioner Welch got in first with the second.
I would second, and I would also second the updated motion with Nick's request on the trash, the condition number two.
Okay, so the motion to repeat it before we vote is, is to approve the application with the conditions as stated by the staff plus the trash condition as stated by Commissioner Ruth. Roll call, vote. Commissioner Wilk? Aye. Commissioner Christensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Welch?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruth?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, and so that passes unanimously. And thank you. We'll move on to our last public hearing, which is 1400 Worf Road. And this is for, I can find it here, a design permit, conditional use permit, and initial, initial study mitigated negative declaration for the rehabilitation and repair of the historic Capitola Worf located within the public facility's zoning district. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair Newman. The City of Capitola is proposing a 7,400 square foot widening of the existing Capitola Worf, a new seven, sorry, 400 square foot restroom facility to replace the existing restroom facility on the Worf, a new restroom facility at the base of the Worf, and a new security gate and modifications to the Worf entrance gates and trestle circulation. Capitola Worf was constructed in 1857, and it's been modified, repaired, and rebuilt multiple times. Uses for the Worf vary during its early existence, but since the 1920s, it has been utilized for sport fishing and recreation mainly. In 1999, the Capitola City Council adopted the Historic Structures List, which identifies Capitola Worf as a historic structure. The Worf begins at the terminus of Worf Road and spans approximately 866 feet in length. The Worf is publicly accessed by foot travel, but is also accessed by motor vehicles primarily for handicap access and boat launching. The Worf contains several small structures, including two commercial structures, a restroom facility, a boat lift, and an entrance gate. The applicant is proposing to widen the existing 20-foot-wide trestle by 16 feet for a total width of 36 feet. The expanded portion would match the initial 85 feet of the trestle. The expansion would increase the Worf area by approximately 7,400 square feet, include the separation of travel from pedestrians and vehicles, and would utilize wooden materials compatible with the existing design. The expansion would be supported by 120 new fiberglass piles with polyethylene steel. The proposal also includes a new metal security gate situated before the Worf restaurant and adjacent structures and modifications to the existing decorative entrance gate. The new metal security gate and decorative entrance gate will match the existing ones but span the width of the expanded Worf. The proposal also includes a new bathroom at the foot of the Worf and replacement of the existing bathroom facility behind the restaurant. Initial design elements for the new and replacement bathroom facilities include vertical wood, wooden bathroom siding with stainless steel metal roof and doors. The final bathroom design will maintain a utilitarian aesthetic that is differentiated from the historic elements of the Worf itself. The final design, scale, and materials for the prefabricated restrooms, altered entrance gates, and security gates, as well as the texture and finish of the proposed exterior of the new piles and repair piles, are subject to review and approval by the Community Development Director. This is included in condition of approval number two. A conditional use permit is required for alterations to historic resources. The proposed project was reviewed by Architectural Historian Leslie Gill, who determined that the proposed Worf rehabilitation additions and alterations have been designed to comply as well as feasible with the standard, and that with the recommended review of the design elements that I just mentioned previously. Prior to construction, the proposal was substantially compatible with the Secretary of the Interior's The initial study and mitigated negative declaration prepared by Moffett and Nickel determined that the proposed project could result in potentially significant effects on biological resources, cultural resources, hydrology and water quality, and noise, but that potential impact could be reduced to less than significant with mitigation measures. The mitigation monitoring and reporting program was prepared for the project in order to mitigate those environmental impacts to a less than significant level. A notice of intent to adopt a mitigated negative declaration circulated for a 30-day public review period between April 9th and May 9th of 2020. Comments were received from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife and the California Coastal Commission. Mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program were then modified to address the concerns raised in those comments. I would point out with this as well, if anyone noticed, that this does not include a coastal development permit because the Worf falls in the jurisdiction of the Coastal Commission. So you will just be approving the conditional use permit, design permit, and initial study and mitigated negative declaration, not the coastal development permit.
Any questions of staff, please?
This is Commissioner Wilk, I have several questions. So, my first question is, uh, basically one of, of, of process, uh, in the history of like, so this wharf has obviously been a huge deal, and I know it went to the city council, and they were gonna raise it six feet and expand it and change the buildings, and, and then, oh, then maybe that was gonna be a phase-two thing, um, and when I discussed this in, with staff, they, Matt mentioned that, uh, that this, this part doesn't even go back to the city council, so I'm, I'm just confused at what, what we're approving here, is this, is this the, is this the final step, or is it, there's nothing going to go back to the city council? This is it? We're just approving this thing, or did we gotta go through this whole thing again when you say the coastal commission permit is required, is requested?
Does staff want to address that?
I, I am not familiar with the previous, uh, attempts to do the, the higher wharf and the full redesign, um, the applicant, uh, which is actually a staff member as well, I believe is on the line, so, uh, Kalash Masunder from the Public Works Department might be able to give a little bit more background on the history of how this developed and how they arrived at this particular design, um, but yes, in, in terms of the conditional use permit and the design permit and the initial study and negative declaration for the scope of the project as described for you tonight, uh, this is the final step. They will also need to get that coastal development permit from the Coastal Commission, but that is outside of our jurisdiction.
Steve Jesper, Public Works Director, has his hand raised as well, if you'd like to hear from him.
Okay, well, yeah, let's, it's, uh, oh, go ahead, you want to answer that question, or we're gonna have general comments, Steve, uh, shortly?
I think he'll, he can give you an update on whether, what steps are required for, uh, the contract and going to city council.
Yeah, I can, can you guys hear me, this is Kalash?
Yes.
Um, so, Peter, to address your process question about council approval, so you guys would be approving the mitigated negative, negative declaration at this stage and allow us to, uh, submit our notice of determination tomorrow to the County Assembly's Office, but then what happens next, before we went up, before we would go to construction on this, we would have to go back to council to present the project that we're putting out for, to bid, so there would be one more point at which council would see this, um, and as far as, uh, addressing your question about the different designs that were brought to council over the course of, you know, a number of meetings, um, over the last couple of years, we were, uh, we were, we put, at one phase, we did present a number of different options for council to review, um, at that point, we kind of narrowed down the different options and the different, um, kind of intentions of those options with, with the idea, one of which you did allude to with phasing, having a higher, a higher wharf at a later time, uh, looking at the cost of that, that, that ended up putting us into a, a design or a construction cost well over fifteen million dollars, which is well outside of what our, our budget was, and so, uh, with, with that knowledge, then we, uh, designed the project as it is now, that allows for, uh, future raising of the wharf, uh, uh, later time, but right now, this project, uh, includes just the existing, renovating the wharf at the existing height.
Thank you, thank you. Any other, Peter, you have some more questions?
I, I do, um, I know that there's gonna be pile driving, and the pile driving noise is a concern, the, uh, I was wondering if there was any, uh, negotiation with, uh, with staff, uh, and the applicant, uh, about constricting the time of, of that pile driving, um, other than the standard, you know, noise windows?
I, I can speak to that a little bit, one, that, the noise, the topic of noise was a concern in, in the document, we did receive some comments on that, um, as a, uh, to, to address that, we've included a mitigation measure to have, um, it's, it's a, it's a kind of a, a buffer situation where they're able to, the strikes are, are muffled slightly by adding, um, their, what are they called, the, the type of board that they put in the place, and when the, the hammer strikes the, the pile itself, uh, it doesn't make as much noise, and alternatively, there's also the ability to use a vibratory hammer instead of a, a striking hammer, so there will be the option of, of using both. Um, in practice, um, after going through the most recent, uh, repair of the emergency repair of the two piles that were broken during, at the, on New Year's this year, uh, we found that the fiberglass piles, which we're intending to utilize, uh, went in fairly smoothly and didn't, didn't require as many strikes as we had initially intended or thought they might take, and so our, our, we're hopeful that the remaining piles that we're planning to install would go the same way, um, as far as addressing the timing of the noise, we, we currently have it in there just to, our, our, our standard construction window timed, um, and I, I don't know if we've really thought about changing that, I don't think we've really, I guess, thought about what that might be, would you have recommendations on what you're, you're proposing there?
Is, in the standard window, it starts at eight AM, is that, is that correct, and that includes Saturday?
So, that's true, actually, um, our public works construction window is Monday through Friday, eight to five, I think planning has a, a larger window that allows for construction activities to take place, so our intentions were to have this, all our standard public works construction window, eight to five, and with the ability to provide, um, flexibility for earlier or later times, if we, if we either, A, have the ability to work during low tide conditions, which is one of the requests of some of the permitting agencies, or if there's any reason why we would have to go into the weekend if there, if there's just a outlier reason that we needed to continue work, but otherwise, uh, the, the goal would be to complete the work during our, our normal eight-to-five construction window.
Yeah, I, I was just thinking there might be complaints if it starts directly at eight, um, but we can discuss that later, okay, that's, that's all my questions, thank you.
Hello?
Hello, it looks like, um, Commissioner Welch has his hand up?
I, I did receive a message from, from Commissioner Welch about the timing and funding for the project, um, and I, I can address that, the, right now, we, we're at the stage of, of completing our CEQA permitting process, but we still have to go through the Regional Water Quality Control Board, the, uh, Fish and Wildlife Service, Army Corps of Engineers, and the National Marine Sanctuary, and the coastal development permit, so, um, upon completion of our CEQA process, if, if that would be completed today, we would then admit, we, we submitted our Fish and Wildlife Service, um, or Army Corps of Engineers permit application today as well, with the, uh, expected timeline of being about one year to have actual permits in hand to complete the work, so that would put us at, uh, being able to initiate construction in the fall/winter of twenty twenty-one. And as far as funding goes, right now, we are, the reason why we advanced the CEQA process is we, uh, were, uh, the, the state budget included one-point-nine million dollars towards Capitola to help us with this wharf, but in order for them to contract with us, we needed to complete our CEQA process, so that's why we advanced the CEQA permitting process in, in front of any of the other permits. Um, with that one-point-nine million, that would add to what we had initially intended to use for Measure F, and at this point, because of the, uh, current state of the economy as a result of, of the COVID crisis, there's a little bit of uncertainty as far as how much we will be able to commit from the Measure F funds to the project, so we're, it's, it's a, that part is not a hundred percent clear as far as where, I think the, the city budget is, is still getting looked at more closely, so, uh, with the, with the state money, we would be able to accomplish a decent amount of the project, and then we would have to determine with council how much more would be funded, and if we would have to then, uh, phase the project, um, so that we wouldn't be addressing each element at the same time.
Thanks, Kalash, that really was, uh, my questions and, and concerns, um, especially around this time when our city's taking such big hits, and you know that personally as a staff person, that, um, hopefully the timeline to start doing the building will be in a time when we can, uh, have a little more funding in the city to be able to take care of our own folks in-house before we start doing capital improvement projects, so, thank you.
Is Chair Newman still on the line? Chair Newman, we cannot hear you. I would suggest that Vice Chair Ruth move to public comment.
Okay, this is Commissioner Ruth, um, do we have any public comments?
I don't see any hands raised at this time, let me see if we have any emails. We have not received any emails on this item.
Okay, with that, then we will close the public portion and bring it back to the commission for comments, uh, Commissioner Wilk?
Yeah, my only comment was, uh, was about the noise, um, starting at, the pile driving specifically, starting early, but, you know, I guess I don't want to bring that up into, uh, into a, a motion or a modification of the recommendation, so, um, I don't have any further comments or concerns with this proposal.
Commissioner Christiansen?
I don't have any, um, comments, I, I think I support this project, I think it's a great, I think the, the, um, um, the, the wharf needs some major updating, but that's it.
Commissioner Wilk?
No, no further comments, I'm, uh, excited about the new bathrooms and, uh, the new wharf being protected, so, uh, I'm in favor of it.
Okay, Chairman Newman, have you returned? Okay, not hearing from Chairman Newman, I just have some questions, uh, Katie, can you tell me what the expected life of those portable restrooms are?
I cannot, maybe, um, Steve Jesper could speak to that possibly, or Kalash, I, I'm not sure.
Okay. I, I can address that.
Thank you.
So, our, you know, it, overall, the, the wharf being a, a coastal structure, um, everything along the coast is definitely subject to lots of weathering, um, our, our, design life that we're, you know, shooting for on this is a, you know, with a minimum of twenty years for, for, you know, without major rehabilitation, um, with these portable restrooms, I think that would be, you know, that's kind of what our expectation would be, that that would be, would be in line with that, so there's lots of a good amount of time needing some type of periodic maintenance over that a twenty-year lifespan.
Okay, well, you know, earlier I mentioned the city's lost its way when it comes to enhancing the character or protecting the character of our community, and I think these restrooms are probably a prime example of that, and I would hope that we could consider them a temporary use and come up with a design that's, uh, going to contribute something to the character of the wharf and the character of our community, and I'm not sure how I would put that into a condition or a direction, but I, I don't think we should live for twenty years with that, uh, with those portable restrooms that do nothing to enhance the character of the, of the village. So, that comment also, I would like to see a condition that guarantees, uh, public access to fishing on both sides of the wharf, and also a condition that no new commercial uses be allowed between the foot of the wharf and the bait shop.
Commissioner Ruth, this is Kalash again, uh, so I think, um, we're, we're along with, in the, you know, the same line of thinking there, um, our, our intention was not to eliminate, uh, fishing on the, I guess that would be the north side of the wharf, um, that, you know, the use as it is today, we would like that to continue as it is, we, we weren't intending to change the overall use of the wharf, the reason for that widening is primarily to provide structural enhancement, and then we saw that also as an opportunity to then provide a little bit of separation between vehicle and pedestrian traffic, where we aren't increasing the, the vehicular capacity at the end of the wharf, so we don't anticipate increased vehicle trips compared to what we're seeing today, it's just a, a matter to provide a little bit more, uh, you know, better user experience so that when there are delivery trucks going out to those, um, businesses that, you know, uh, pedestrians can just e- easily be off to the side, um, and then I wanted to bring up one point for, about the noise, we do have a condition to have a soft start for those, for the pile driving impacts, and that's part of one of our mitigation measures as it, as it is, so we would slowly be ramping up to pile driving in the morning, in the morning, so it wouldn't immediately start at, at full strength.
Good, okay, Chairman Newman, you're back?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, well, it's amazing. I'm totally, do you will, there's that is, okay, yeah, um, do we have any other public comments?
Yeah, we've gone through the public comment and closed the public portion.
Okay, well, do we have a motion?
Well, can I get a clarification first, because Commissioner Ruth mentioned a, a lot of motions, but he was having trouble with specifically the issue on the bathrooms, I'd like to give him some support on that, since this is a design that the city is responsible for, I'm not all that thrilled with those bathrooms either, especially if they're gonna last twenty years, but I also am not sure how to structure a motion that would require those to be redesigned.
I'd like to chime in here, I, I believe we have a condition in there now because, because we weren't able to have final design plans for the bathroom, uh, facilities, what we've used there is, is representative of the type of bathroom facility we would want to have, where that would be single-use, uh, bathrooms that wouldn't, would have, you know, individually closing doors rather than a, like a, a larger communal bathroom, so that, that is one of the conditions that we had in there that when, when, uh, Matt was speaking to this, that is subject to the Community Development Director's approval at the end, and that was because, at, at the stage we're at now in design, we didn't have that fully flushed out, so that's.
Number two.
No, no, but, go ahead.
And so the intention there is to maintain the character of the building, and, and, you know, that was feedback that we received during our public, um, hearings and, and our, and all throughout the process, so I, I, I agree with Commissioner Ruth's comment there, and that is something that we want to include.
Uh, I'm not sure that I understand what you mean when you said maintain the character of the buildings, does that mean you'll maintain the buildings as proposed? That was not my, that was not the direction of my comment, my comment was to replace those at some point in the near future with a structure that is more closely aligned and represents the character of Capitola, not just a square box.
Well, this is a design permit, so I think if we approve this, we approve that current design, I don't know how we, uh, approve it without, with, with having them come back with a new design.
Well, technically, that's actually included as a condition too, because, uh, the Community Development Director would still need to approve the final design scale and materials for the restrooms. So there is, it isn't actually an approval of the final design at this point, that you're approving the project with, um, the Community Development Director having the final say on that design.
Well, is, is that what commissioners want to do?
Can we, can we change that, uh, condition, so the final design is brought back to the planning commission?
I believe so.
Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to see that incorporated into that condition, that And I'd like to put a life on those portable bathrooms. I don't want to see them for 20 years. I would say within three years that the city return with a design for permanent restrooms out there.
Well, the only question I have about that is what if they don't?
Well, I'm guessing if we make it as a condition and a direction, they have to unless they ignore it.
Okay, do you want to make a motion with those changes?
Okay, let me try one here. Okay, I would move approval of the design, is it a concept? Of the conditional use permit and the design permit with an added condition that the portable restrooms be established out there no longer than three years and a design that reflects a more, it's so hard to do, the character of the village for a permanent restroom be completed within three years. Hopefully, staff can reword that so it makes sense. And I'd also like to add a condition that no new commercial structures or enterprises are allowed between the foot of the wharf and the first commercial building that currently exists.
Can you clarify the part about the design of the bathrooms? Do you want to come back to the planning commission?
Yes.
Does everyone understand that motion?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second, Commissioner Wilk.
Okay, do we have any discussion?
Could I bring up, I don't, I just want to, and maybe Steve Jesburg can also chime in. But in terms of budget this year, we've just gone through a major cut to spending within the city. And I'm not sure what the permanent bathrooms would cost versus these temporary bathrooms. But three years, I'm not sure where we'll be in our recovery from the current pandemic. And just as staff and knowing what we've been going through with the budget cuts, I just want to voice concern.
The motion was to, Katie, the motion was to come back with the design within three years, wasn't to replace them within three years.
Okay, and
Well, that's a little vague to me, but so let me try and restate the motion and see if it's acceptable to the, we got a second? Yeah, we did get a second. It's a motion to approve the design permit, conditional use permit, and initial study, mitigated negative declaration for the rehabilitation and repair of these historic capital wharf. If the conditions proposed by staff accept that there shall be no new buildings in the new parts, the additions to the wharf. The temporary restrooms are approved for a period of three years. And the city, the planning commission will need to approve the final design of the new bathroom.
Commissioner Newman, we also have Steve Jesburg with his hand up as an attendee.
First, let's, first Commissioner Ruth, and then we'll have Mr. Jesburg.
Okay, it wouldn't be commercial, it wouldn't be buildings between the restroom and the first, basically bait shop, be no commercial uses?
No commercial uses, okay, with that saying. Mr. Jesburg, do you want to say something?
Good evening, commissioners. Thanks for listening. Yeah, I wanted to clarify those commercial uses, because we will be building one of these restrooms between the end of the wharf and the first commercial building. Regarding the restrooms, question for Commissioner Ruth is, these buildings are not temporary, they're modular. It just means they're made off-site and then brought in. We can modify, we can design any exterior we want with those. And I'm wondering if we can come back with design options for these modular buildings rather than, you know, redesigning and rebuilding a building from scratch. There is certain advantages to using the modular building. I think it'll have the same life as another building, but we can come back with other facades that can address perhaps your design concern. And that's something we could do with the initial project, if that would be satisfactory.
Mr. Jesburg, I don't think that the motion really specifies how we will go about designing the restrooms. It's just that it has to be approved by the planning commission rather than staff.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's correct.
And I think the reality is that three years down the road, for one reason or another, economic distress or otherwise, there has to be a delay. I'm sure that the planning commission of the city council at that time would extend the temporary use if necessary. So, was that
I'm confused. This is Commissioner Wilk. Steve managed to confuse me. So, I thought what he said is that he would like approval of the modular design as staff proposed, but that staff would then go ahead and present at some point different facades that, I guess, staff would approve, or maybe he would bring back before us, as opposed to redoing it in three years. And I'm not sure what the motion is requiring, which of those?
This is Commissioner Ruth. My interpretation is there are various designs that are available through the company that offers the prefab restrooms. And that Steve was going to produce some various designs for the planning commission and to peruse and possibly approve one.
And so by approving this motion, we are assuming that there will be another approval for restroom design?
That's the way I understand it.
The way I intend it.
What I'm hearing is you would move forward tonight with the design permit, conditional use permit, and the initial study. But the condition number two would change, that the final bathroom design would have to come back to the planning commission before being
Got it, thank you.
Thanks for making it simple, Katie.
Yeah, thank you. That's why we have staff. Commissioner Wilk?
So, that, so I seconded it, so I agree with all of that stuff. Are you asking me for a vote?
Yeah, we're at the roll call now.
Aye.
Commissioner Christensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilk?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruth?
Aye.
And Chairman also is unanimous, aye. Thank you. We look forward to seeing a wharf construction in the near future. And that will take us to the director's report.
Okay.
Did you hear that?
Yes, I'm just pulling up the slides.
Oh, okay, you're pondering.
Um. So. Okay, are you seeing a single slide on the screen?
And the next slide also.
You are, okay, that's what I wanted to make sure was not happening. How's that?
We can ignore it.
Oh.
There, now we have one.
Okay. Okay, so before you, this evening, with the director's report, I wanted to give you an update on the efforts made for business recovery since the, in the past two weeks regarding the COVID-9 pandemic. Last Saturday, the county was granted a variance from the state to move further into the Phase Two, so restaurants could open. And the health official, when taking these, when applying for the variance, made it clear to all of our neighboring jurisdictions in the city of Capitola that when indoor dining is allowed, outdoor dining is a great alternative to make sure we provide adequate spacing between restaurant goers. Staff worked closely these past two weeks with the BIA and the Business Recovery Committee, and has developed concepts to support local businesses. Right now, with the current beach closure within the village, we are allowed to have seating on the streets, except for the area adjacent to the seawall. So, I'm going to present to you tonight what we've, the actions that we've taken to help out in the village, and also the actions, the new processes available to all businesses within the city of Capitola. First, we've moved forward, there was an emergency order passed by the city manager this week to streamline temporary uses and planning permits. This was introduced to the city council last week and had great support. And currently, under this new temporary use permits, the conversion of parking areas can be utilized for businesses for uses such as outdoor dining, or for religious institutions such as churches to move seating outside. Also, allowing streamlined temporary use permits for takeout windows, so restaurants can now request a takeout window with an administrative over-the-counter permit. And then other uses to physically, for physical modifications to businesses. So, there's another category within our streamlined permit, if a business has a need that helps with the safety and social distancing requirements due to COVID-19, we can accommodate that and look at each application as a unique, tied to their unique circumstances. So, within outdoor dining and takeout windows, the city has, I worked on creating standards with staff. And we now have an application that, and any applications which comply with all the standards can be approved administratively by the Community Development Director, as well as the Public Works Director. So, in our efforts working with the Capitola Village BIA, the idea of this concept is to maintain access through the village by the automobile at all times, replace public parking that's adjacent to restaurants with outdoor dining areas, also to create additional curbside pickup areas for folks who want to come in and just pick up food from the restaurants. So, creating more 15-minute spots throughout the village. Also, parking only removed in areas for outdoor dining and curbsides. So, maintaining parking throughout the village in areas that it's not necessary to be removed to assist with businesses. During the council meeting, there was also support for increasing the parking to three hours within our village lots and open parking along Cliff Drive, so that occurred today. And today, we also began installing our benches throughout the city to identify those areas that will be used for dining. So, on this map, you can see the blue areas are outdoor dining areas. And working with the BIA, they met with each of the individual restaurants, figured out exactly what their needs are. This map was many phone calls and many discussions to get to. But each restaurant that wants to participate has the ability to participate. They're welcome to come back at a later time and tell us that they'd like some parking spaces. But the map you're seeing in front of you tonight is close to what you'll be experiencing. It'll probably start getting built out as soon as tomorrow, but definitely you'll see an evolution of our village in the next week. So, along the esplanade, the parking was removed today, and there's now a line of benches right in front of the restaurants. Each restaurant has space in which they can utilize on the street. This concept, it maintains the availability for the car to move through the village, as well as on the esplanade, there will still be parking on the left-hand side of the street. We've been working with the hotel for their drop-off pickup location to make that smoother for them as well. On San Jose Avenue, there's three restaurants, the Capitola Wine Bar, the hot dog stand. There's three restaurants that are going to be utilizing space on San Jose Avenue. The new tasting room at 111 Capitola Avenue, English Ales, which opened maybe two weeks before the COVID-19 crisis or pandemic. They're opening for business, and they're also going to have some seating along Capitola Avenue. And then on Monterey Avenue, several of the restaurants. And El Toro Bravo will be utilizing a portion of Long Way due to their unique circumstance, being on a curve and making sure that patrons are safe. We also worked with the BIA to create design and infrastructure standards, so that there's one cohesive look throughout the village. As we had all of our benches stored up in the upper parking lot over the past couple months, we've now moved those down to the village. And through the use of nautical rope, planters, and posts, we'll be creating, the BIA has been working hard on creating stanchions. And we'll create a nice cohesive theme, that each of the pots will be planted with their, the posts will be put in the pot, cemented, and then fill the planter on top with soil and some flowers. And so that's the design and infrastructure and overall look. Throughout the city, we've put standards within the guidance documents that individuals, so restaurants throughout the city are welcome to come in for permits as well for outdoor dining. And in the guidance documents, we ask that the design that they choose to utilize have some connectivity to the architecture of the building in sight. So, just want to emphasize that social distancing and other rules are still in place. So, there is social distancing protocol that needs to be followed by each of these businesses. Right now, it's currently the six feet of separation between, that'll apply to tables within restaurants. Masks are required indoors and outdoors when social distancing requirements cannot be met. And any business that is now opening, they have to follow the standards put out by the governor within the resilience roadmap. So, there's, within the resilience roadmap, there's guidance for all of the restaurants opening up at this time. And also for our bars and pubs and tasting rooms, all of those entities are also included in the resilience roadmap and now must serve food, a sit-down, a dine-in meal with any beverage. So, you're not allowed to go into a tasting room right now and just for tasting. You also have to have a sit-down meal. So, next I'd like to show where to find permits, in case there's any business owners tuning in from home. So, on our website at City of Capitola, on, uh-oh. That's not going to work. Okay, well, I'll talk you through it. On the City of Capitola website, under what's new, there's the business recovery page. It's the first thing listed. And applicants can go to the, can click under what's new, under the business recovery page. And when they get to that page, it'll, there's some guidance for exactly what permits we're putting in place. So, there's guidance for outdoor dining, there is guidance for changing a window, for a takeout window. And there's also a new, it's an agreement that for each of these applications, it's not a permit, it's an agreement. It's a temporary COVID-19 agreement that will be in place through, at least for four months with the city, and then extended every month after in which social distancing is still required by the county. So, we're not sure how long these agreements will be in place, but we definitely, with the investment that needs to go into these improvements, we did put a four-month minimum, so that there's a return on investment for all of these business owners. And thank you, Larry. So, here is the Capitola Business Recovery information page, and you can see the temporary outdoor activities is listed. And the, a couple of things that need to be outdoor activities is listed, and the, a couple things that need to be filled out here. Let's see if I can control. So there's, here is the encroachment agreement, and then the guidance documents are here. And then there's also guidance for ABC licenses for outdoor dining. So for any business that would like to serve beer or wine outdoors, they will have to get a catering, yes, the catering authorization permit from the ABC. They're turning those around in a 24-hour period, and it's a $100 process. So that's what we have currently in place to help businesses. We're also working towards, on a separate note, getting some grant money from the, at the state level to help businesses with COVID-19-related overhead expenses. So I'll bring you more on that once we actually have our application in and know more. But that's your director's report for this evening.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Communications, Commissioner Communications, anyone?
None for me.
Commissioner Welch?
None for me. None for me.
Okay. I would like to come back to the issue of the city council considering some restrictions on the loss of housing stock along the lines of the Noah Act. And I guess I would just ask if there'd be some kind of, maybe it'll find its way by appeal anyway to the city council, but I would like to ask to communicate that request.
I can bring that to them.
Will you give your planning commission report?
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? If not, I want to thank the staff for great work in bringing us, helping us through this 1:00 p.m. And it's been a long night. But we will adjourn to the meeting in July. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Katie. Thanks, Ed.